Definitely moving along. I feel like we've landed in the man on the moon. We're getting this all done in such a short time. So it's just truly been a huge team effort from the city staff, from the architect staff. Everybody is putting in and working on it so hard. So just thank you to everybody. Really appreciate it. We are going to meet our schedule. We will have a package, a bid package before the council on March 19th for consideration. So we are on track. We've been working with the DNR and we've made some middles answer their questions. We poked them today saying, hey, come on, get us our answers. Let's keep moving along. So we're in constant contact with them as well. So we're very comfortable with that. There will be the main bid package that has the building and all the buildings and every, in the main site work. That'll be one big package that we'll, we'll get bids for. We're going to have a smaller secondary package that will address only the environmental because of the funding mechanism that we're going to use for that. So there will be two, actually two bids for your consideration on the 19th. But they're both, they're going to run in parallel. But we need to do that to keep the funding separate. And the rules with one funding, we don't want to impact the bigger projects. So we need to keep them separate. And then lastly, I want to show you the bit of that the city has live. Rebecca and the communications team, Kelly and Jennifer worked really, really hard on this. Dave gave a lot of information, which is really nice if I can find departments. There we go. So if we go to departments here, and then we just scroll down to Public Works. We can come over to this facility study. And it says future development of Public Works facility. And then here's our webpage. Talks about what's coming soon. Has a tentative schedule on there. We've got the rendering that we showed the last time of the fire round, some different facts about Public Works in general. And then we have a list of frequently asked questions. So if you click on this, it opens up a new page. And then you can click on each of the answered questions and answers all the way through.
It's 1906 South 53rd.
Yes, 1906 South 53rd. A little throwback to our history here. And then we have some quick links to former studies and different information about how we got here, the site analysis. And so all kinds of really good information that we have out there. So just again, just a brief update. Does anybody have any questions or comments that I need to address?
Any questions or comments? Well, thank you, Melinda.
Oh, great. Thank you.
Our next item is discussion regarding the city's snow plowing and parking enforcement policies, procedures, and practices. Honors, Stefanski, you asked for this meeting. Do you have, you want to start it off?
I just figured with the issues that we had this last snowfall, it would be good to discuss it and, and have Dave come up and share some stuff that they did with this, this last storm and how they fought it. And you know, we, we saw on social media, people constantly just ripping on how the plowing was done. But a lot of them don't seem to understand what goes into it. So I figured it'd be best for Dave to kind of give us an overview.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, Dave did a nice presentation at the police neighborhood meeting.
I saw that on the video.
It was good.
But I appreciate the opportunity. And again, I do want to say we're not perfect. We try our best. I can't say enough for our staff. Multiple shifts, unexpected scheduling. There was all individuals that came in and didn't deny themselves the request. They came in to work. And I do want that known at this time that we got a pretty good group for that. So snow and ice control, I just want to give a brief summary. Our goal is to provide good traffic, safe passage throughout the city. Could be the patrons, could be visitors. How do you do that? It's through the main thoroughfares, which is the, the most used streets throughout the city. Priorities are such. So when you have the main thoroughfares used the most, most of our attention is dedicated to the main thoroughfares. Obviously, when a snowstorm starts, we put our attention to the main thoroughfares. But we don't forget about the residential streets as well as the alleys, so on and so forth. And you see the other responsibilities that we have to put our attention to. This slide is just indicating to you the summary of items that we're responsible for. What I want the public to understand is the main thoroughfares, we have 45 center lane miles of our main thoroughfares. How many streets is that? About 33, I guess. It takes not one, not two, but three vehicles to do certain mains. Cleveland Avenue, National Avenue. Why? Because of the width. When those vehicles are out plowing, it could be a tandem dump truck along with two refuse packers or recycling packers. It takes time for them to, to travel to three or four miles. Anybody want to guess the speed?
Five.
Eight miles per hour. And that depends on how heavy the snow is. So it's rather slow, but cumbersome, but try our best. But I get that, that we can't reach out to each and every space throughout the city. So anyway, main thoroughfares, 45 center line miles. We consolidate those 33 streets into 15 routes. Residential, we have 140 center lane miles, which we compile those into 31 residential routes for each and every driver. Alleys, it's five routes for about 40 miles. Bed ends, cul-de-sacs, sidewalks, so on and so forth. Those are responsibilities. Once the mains, the residential streets, as well as the alleys are addressed, then those same people are going back to do the cul-de-sacs, the sidewalks, so on and so forth. What do you, what equipment do we use? Well, ideally, we like to have dump trucks for all the routes. Why? Because, thank you, because they, you can, the turning radius is optimal. You can spread as you plow the salt. You have an underbody scraper and most of the dump trucks. You may have a wing blade. So five of the 18 dump trucks, thank you to the council for allowing us to purchase those wing blades where you can do a lane and a half more efficient. So that helps. Pickup trucks, about four years ago, any and all pickup trucks that we purchased, we were again allowed to purchase those that had an all-wheel drive. So anything and everything that has all-wheel drive is out plowing. Garbage recycling packers are such, just that. Their main priority is collecting garbage and recycling. However, we do use those for snow plowing. Now, they're not the best. They're good on mains because it's straightaway. But once they get into their assigned residential area, they tend to have a hard time with turning radius as well as going through without, you know, when you have large amounts of snow, they tend to get stuck a little bit more easier. Front end loaders, it'd be awesome to have 20 front end loaders, but we have eight. They're optimal. They're the ones that are on the mains as well. Once they're done with their mains, they are dedicated for the alleys because they are smaller. When you have the T alleys, you have a tighter turning radius, 11-foot blades. So again, that's something that's just ideal having those in our fleet. Last year, with the council's approval, we purchased three all-terrain Bobcat four-wheelers. These replace the German-made holders. They're more flexible. They're more durable. They are the ones that provide us a lot of efficiency, flexibility. So this is the first year that we've been using them and we're very pleased with them. The 200 series dump truck, that is a little bit more than a one ton, one, one and a half ton. So when we're plowing through a residential street and we cannot get through because it's too narrow for the refuse packer or the dump truck, that person, that driver will call in and say, hey, I can't get through 59th Street from this to this. We will try to send either a pickup truck or the 200 series dump truck at least to get a passage for the residents. So how do we plan? Well, we listened to another, the National Weather Service in Sullivan, very good people. We have a lot of virtual meetings with them. A lot of it depends on the type of snowstorm, obviously. So when you have sleet, obviously maybe salt or brine would accomplish that goal of safe passage through West Dallas. But when you have snow and then you have freezing temperatures thereafter, that means that we have to get to a lot of places in a very short period of time before it adheres to the road surface. So factors that we consider in our meetings at Public Works are how long is the, the snowstorm? Or the sleet, or whatever storm that we're predicted to have? What type is it? It could start out as a sleet storm into a snowstorm and then again have freezing rain thereafter where it's compressing the snow into the, the street. How long is the storm? Is it one day, two days, three days? It matters because if you want to continue services, then you have to plan and say, what services do we want to cancel? What shifts do we want to start scheduling? We do not have enough people or enough vehicles to have 45 trucks out there all the time at every given moment. So, and you guys realize that as well. Wind conditions. Usually the snowstorm comes from the southwest, but every now and then it comes from the lake. We get enhanced snow. In some cases, even lowers their accumulations, which is a good thing. But most of all, it's unpredictable. So we could be predicted for a one-inch, two-inch snowstorm and we may receive three or four inches. Now, how does that differ? It means we're going from a salting operation, a 10, 15 trucks. Now we're planning for a full plow operation to remove the snow from the, the street throughout the city. Other factors that we got to consider is the time of day, rush hour, morning, in the evening, high visibility traffic. How can you get through to these routes on the mains when there's high traffic? So then we may go into the residential sections. Day of the week, obviously you have vacations, you have weekends, trying, you know, to get all the staff necessary. People are sacrificing their plans, but we've always had enough personnel and staffing. So we got to consider what we need to do before, during, and after a storm. And sometimes it may change at a moment's notice. But pre-event, we do have meetings prior to, up to a week prior to a storm. And then 24 hours before the storm hits with our staff, our managers and supervisors. Obviously, we talk about the duration of the storm, but also the equipment availability as well as the staff. Winter watch person, there is a person that's assigned throughout the winter months, throughout one week. That person is assigned to watch over West Dallas during the non-business hours. So they are the first contact. They will be alerted by either the police department or themselves to go out and make sure the road conditions are safe for the patrons and the visitors of West Dallas. But also they have the authority to call in, up to five to 10 drivers, to either salt or plow on their own. So the plan of action, again, could change. It could start out with the basic brining, then to salting, salting and plowing, so on and so forth. So starting out with the basic protection of what we like to apply or the applications is brining. Conditions got to be optimal. Then temperature's got to be at least 25 degrees, no moisture, no rain, no sleet because obviously you'll have runoff where the brine will not stick or adhere to the road surface. When you do have optimal conditions, brine itself will treat up to about one inch of snow. So that allows us more time for bringing in more drivers as well. When you do apply brine to the salt, either with the spreaders, it creates a more adhesion or stickiness to the salt, creates less bouncing. So therefore it saves, it's more efficient. It doesn't bounce to the curb. So it adheres more and activates the salt more readily. So general information, plowing, so about four years ago, anytime there's a snowed accumulation on the road surface, especially on the main thoroughfares, we plow. We plow it off. So the salt application can go directly on the road surface. That way it's more efficient. We're not wasting salt. When we go to residential sections, it may be one or two inches. And I'll say, go ahead and put the blades down and apply salt. Now, we could go through and if it's one or two inches, just apply salt. But it's more efficient. We're getting more bang for our buck when we plow the driving lanes and applying salt. It works quicker and faster and more efficient. Once it is compacted, so the more traffic that's driving in on the main thoroughfares or residential sections before we get there, high-traffic areas, it's hard to react to that. It's hard and older person Christian and older person Hune as well. There are some areas in your area that it just bonded, the temperatures lowered, and we just couldn't get that bonding or that snow or ice from the road surface. So that's one that, you know, as the temperatures increase, I thought, you know, the underbody scrapers on the dump trucks would scrape it off. It didn't. So we had to wait for warmer temperatures. We did apply material for that, but it was just kind of a time thing. So we do get calls regarding, hey, I seen a refuse packer, recycling packer drive through my residential area and, and putting salt down. Well, we do not have the capacity, a refuse packer or recycling packer to spread salt. So we are limited in that means that when the dump trucks are into their assigned areas, once they're done, then they have to go in and treat those areas of other plows that don't have that capacity. So the challenges that we face, again, duration of the storm, it just means staffing-wise, equipment-wise. You never know, but for the most part, the weather forecasts have been fairly accurate. Residential streets, when you have high amounts of accumulation of snow, you may have five or 10 drivers initially with a snowstorm. We tend to move them from the main thoroughfares once they are drivable into the residential sections. Why? At least to have drivable passage for the patrons and visitors, at least to get through for the emergency vehicles. Again, that's 140 lane miles. So it does take time. So why don't you call in all 40 or 45 employees at that time and do that? We just can't because we can't waste the labor time and the amount of time for all the staff to report during a snowstorm because if the duration of snow that is accumulating exceeds more than 16 hours, we wouldn't have any staff left. We are very fortunate to have new employees, but with new employees, we have training. So 40% of our current staff is three years or less. So they're kind of learning on the job. We did, once they're hired, we do go through routinely their potential assigned route and then kind of have them with the vehicle that they may be assigned with. But it's nothing like the real thing. So once you get out there, there is a fear of hitting the curb, getting close to a parked vehicle or vehicles, the temptation of going down a narrow street and saying, yeah, I will try it. And then you're halfway through and then you got to back up. So I give them kudos, but that's on us that we're trying to provide more training for those new employees. But we're excited. We have a good group of employees. Special requests. You guys hear special requests? We do as well. We try to address those throughout the storm and after. But always remember, when you tell the, the patrons that call you, it takes away from the person on a certain task or route to go and address that one or two different type of special requests. You guys, I think, are aware that in the last snowstorm, not only did we have 14 inches, but it was a long duration of the storm, but we had a couple of trees go down. We had about 30 or 40 trees that fell, large limbs. It was a headache to be certain. But we had a good group. So those forestry employees or staff that were assigned to plowing, we had to remove them and say, hey, chainsaws, we have to address this. It's more urgent. So therefore it delayed. In their routes, assigned routes of the 31 residential routes, Route number 10 may not have been addressed right away because he, the arborist that was assigned there had to go and, you know, address those other issues. So we may get main brakes, traffic controllers, street lights knocked down, so on and so forth. It's usually with a large plow operation like this, we can put on 400 to 500 easily lane miles of plowing the residential, the mains, the safety islands, so on and so forth, the alleys. Snow emergency, another change was approved this, late this fall. Again, the snow emergencies, when you are on a major thoroughfare, there's about 33 streets of those, there's no parking at all. So main thoroughfares, no parking through the duration of a snow emergency when it's declared. Residential parking. Well, number one, you have to have an overnight parking permit. That's number one. Check. Second step is look at your residence and see if you have a driveway or a garage. Preferably, if you can park there, that would be ideal. So we want to create less parking on the residential streets. So instead of eight miles per hour, maybe we could go 15 and we could just go straight through and plow. So with that, the residential streets, with parking vehicles before midnight, so today is the 6, it's even. Before midnight, you get home at 10 o'clock or 11 o'clock, you park on the even side of the street. For those that may get home after midnight or work third shift, you're getting home on an odd day. I shouldn't, not an odd day, but odd calendar day.
The date is odd.
Yeah, there you go. Thanks. So you look at the calendar and you say, well, I'm a little bit late. I got to go to the calendar date prior to, which is even. So you park on the even side for this example of tonight. Doing so, you would park on the even side from midnight to 3:00 PM during a snow emergency declaration. So why the, the long duration? It was 3:00 AM to 6:00 AM. Now we're making it longer. And that's to allow, again, older person Christian and older person Hune and our city attorney. It's making it a little bit easier for us. So on the other side, where you have legal parking, you'll have a lot of snow there that we'll do a replow and try to move that snow out. So that's the good thing. We try to get to, you know, throughout the city during that time. Sometimes we don't, but we try our best. So these are some of the pictures that we have where we have narrow streets. In doing so, it's just kind of, here's a front end loader, which the individual actually raised a front end loader, the blade, to get through. If you have a dump truck or a refuse packer, you will not be able to do that, but you'll have to back out. Some of the common questions that we receive, do we plow and salt all the city streets? That depends on if we have a light snow or a, you know, just sleet. Usually what we do with the main thoroughfares, we will do for the residential and alleys. It's just a, you know, our priority is emergency thoroughfares first and then the residential and alleys thereafter. Will the snowplow ever completely clear my residential street down the bare pavement? Again, once we get done with the main thoroughfares, usually with the high-traffic areas and residential areas and based on the temperature, if it's below freezing, usually it may be compacted where it created a bond to the road surface. So it's kind of hard to promise that, but we attempt that. Our goal is to make sure that it's drivable. Why is my street always plowed last? Well, we sadly, we always have to have a beginning and then. In doing that, believe it or not, there is some strategy where we try to have right-hand turns throughout the plow route. We don't want to turn left and cross traffic because it would delay and cause, you know, potential accidents and that sort of thing. So. I only have on-street parking. Why do you always plow against my vehicle? Well, we start from the center and plow to the curb or to a driveway. We try to clear to the terrace area. Sometimes streets, Lincoln Avenue does not have much of a terrace area. So we do have to remove that snow. And if there is a parked vehicle there, obviously the snow will have a windrow against it. As mentioned, if you do have available driveways, garages, alternative parking means, please do so. The less vehicles that are parked on residential streets, it's just more efficient for us. What can I do about snowplows that block my driveway and with snow? Well, again, that's part of the process. When you do plow, it is going and it is directed towards the curb. Anytime you have an open curb or driveway approach, the snow is going to seek the less resistance and pile in that area. We do attempt to turn our blade once we approach a drive approach, driveway approach, and try to minimize that. But again, if you have a parked vehicle prior to that driveway approach, you're going to have more accumulation of snow that can be deposited into the driveway. So again, neighbors have to talk. They have to get to know each other. They have to remind people that, hey, you know, should you be parking there? Do you realize it could result in this? So what can patrons do? Some of the tips is sign up for on the city website for any type of snow emergency updates. Social media, we usually try to update with our plans and where we're at with the plowing operation. Again, if you can keep the vehicles, try to put them off-street parking into your driveways or garages, so on and so forth. Shovel snow if you're facing downward, you know, towards the street. Pile the snow downward, you know, with the plow and how it won't go back into your driveway approach. Get to know your neighbors. Remind them. Seek help for those are elderly and disabled. We receive many, many, many requests and I feel bad for them, but we can't go to each and every resident. So we need your help. The people in West Dallas where they have neighbors, I've, you know, they're elderly and they just don't have the capacity to remove the snow, especially the high moisture snow, the heavy snow. Try to be patient. We cannot get throughout the whole city within an hour or two hours. Usually a full plow operation will take six to eight hours depending on the, the amount of snow that we receive. But we're always trying to improve on that. Requirements, always remember the emergency parking rules that we discussed here tonight. Main thoroughfares, when it's declared, obviously there's no. Uh main thoroughfares, when it's declared, obviously there's no parking and then uh parking the residential areas requirements. Sidewalks, make sure that you clear sidewalks within twenty-four hours. Do not project uh any type of snow onto your neighbor's lot or in the alleys where you're depositing in another neighbor's area um or back onto the right of way or the street. Once they do that, it looks like we didn't plow and we don't need that. But it does create other hazards, so again, by the time we get back for replowing, it could be a day or a day and a half uh before we can address that. So um make sure you clear snow and ice around your refus and recycling containers so staff can remove it and service it. Talk to your neighbors, you know, the one person that has the fire hydrant in front of their property kinda has a responsibility of clearing it. Help them out. Um as a neighborhood, you know, every now and then assist that person or that property of clearing the fire hydrant, so it's not too much of a burden on that family or that couple or that resident. So here you see some pictures of the, the most recent storm. You can kinda see that the intersection where the plow driver is coming up to the intersection is somewhat narrow. We gotta remove some trees or it's the same picture, but uh that was kinda fun. But we had a fleet mechanic that was available that came out and did the ex- uh ran the excavator. So I'm very proud to say of the cross training that we do. We have water division, forestry, electrical, anybody that's available, plow, salt, or what have you. So the hundred and ten, this last uh operation, we had eighty-three people uh apply, you know, addressing that storm, so.
Mr. President?
Home Miss.
So a couple of questions. If we have a resident or residents that are blowing snow on back onto the street, will they get fined? Is there a, is there a fine for that?
So you can call the Public Works uh general number and a supervisor will go out there directly and warn, forewarn that individual, you know, what they're doing. Uh in some cases, the non-emergency number of the police department, and I don't want to speak for the police department. But when they have time, they have helped us out with illegal parked cars and with these measures of, you know, blowing snow on the neighbor or the cities right away. But again, we don't get one or two. We get a lot of those, you know, during a snowstorm. So we try to address them, but with the help of the police department, they've been great uh addressing that with us.
And I saw a number of kind of, well, this last storm, we obviously had more of a problem because it froze almost right away after the snow stopped. So it made it very impossible to do a proper plowing job, so. And I wanna say thank you to the, to you for responding to the people who you did respond to for me 'cause I didn't get any call back saying, they never did it for me. So it was all, it was all covered with thank you on that. Um but I still think we need to address something with parking and people continuously parking illegally. I don't know what we can do, but it seems to be an issue again, so.
And again, I, when I was out there, I did see vehicles being ticketed. I did see vehicles being towed. It's a mu- a matter of, and again, I don't wanna speak on your behalf, the police department capacity, uh availability of the contractor of having the necessary vehicles available, but also having the space, but also, you know, going to these different locations. But the police department, I know, uh did write citations to address those areas. Uh but it's time-consuming, you know, and in the meanwhile, we're waiting, you know.
And it could be taking them away from something else.
But again, I don't wanna say, you know, improvement. We need improvement. I, I admit that. Uh we are plowing too far away from the radius, the curb radius, but also the curves. And that's a teaching moment where we are going back. Uh we do have video now that we're using where we can go back to the operator now and review some of the route and say, here's an instance where you need to, you know, have the blade hit the curb and the radius. But again, with your understanding that there's certain vehicles that the turning radius is limited if you're in a refuse packer, recycling packer. So then after this large storm, we had the dump trucks come in. We had those all-train uh vehicles go in and try to adjust uh those areas, but.
Mr. President? I'm gonna circle the drain here and go back to um enforcement. First, I do wanna thank you, Dave, and the whole department. You guys did a bang-up job. You had a lot of challenges. Uh it wasn't easy taking calls from us as elders as well, um stomping our feet on things too. Um what I'm hearing as a common theme is a multitude of things. And we've tried to combat this in my three and a half years with the lack of not enforcement, but residents participating in this cleanup. Meaning parking smart, training their brains, and abiding by our ordinances. Uh Alderwoman Keen and I worked diligently that first year to put that ordinance together to help the department and to help the city. And if anybody looks at that, that it wasn't successful, it mirrored exactly what the snow emergency is. However, we didn't invest the money that we would need for signage, and that was, I think, the critical downfall. Going back to this continued issue, I think the only way we're really gonna look at improving this is either we're gonna have to look at investing in, in some sort of system, whether it be no parking or put, putting that into an ordinance from December through March. Because those are our critical months. I don't know if you agree with me. I, I think that your fall cleanups are good with city services. I don't think there's that much of a problem. It's this winter window. I would like us to at least consider that going forward. We have to come up with a, a plan. We can't keep knocking the department, the police department, for saying, hey, you're not doing your job. They have three parking control officers. They have a multitude of responsibilities that they're taking on during storms too. They can't be out there one hundred percent of the time ticketing cars. But I do believe if we have consistency and maybe some more resource for enforcement, whether that falls back with a combination effort between D P W and P D, that maybe once those wallets are hit consistently, people will wake up because I do see it primarily as being a people problem. You're right, Dave. You know, get to know your neighbors. I coordinate on my block. Not everybody's always happy about it, but it makes sense. Um with the growing number of vehicles in the city, and I know we have different forms of transportation, you know, you got three to five vehicles per household with a garage that's packed with your, you know, as a storage locker. They're not using it. So uh without carrying on too long, I think that's something that we should think about going forward. I think with this beautiful new D P W that we're building, that it might be something wise to at least uh consider and, and look at the logistics that would be involved in maybe creating a parking enforcement division. Um I don't wanna go too far off topic, but I really do think that I'd, I'd love to hear your feedback because what I'm seeing is you've got this operation, you've got the experience behind it, Dave. I think you do a fantastic job with what you have to work with. But I really see enforcement as being an issue and these obstructions. I think you can be much more efficient. It's just common sense. If you have a clear roadway to work with and people are following the laws and the rules, you can be a heck of a lot more efficient. So that's, that's pretty much what I have for now.
Kayla, I have a question. What is the fine for parking illegally during a snowstorm and are we at the maximum?
I believe we uh went through this a couple of years ago where it was maxed out. The fine right now.
Yeah, I think we took it to the max for everything across the board.
I thought you did.
Oh, we absolutely did.
Forty dollars for the first violation. It can be a hundred dollars for the second subsequent violation.
Which is a reduction. You, you lowered it to forty. It used to be fifty.
It had to be in order to get that one hundred on the second one because that was repeat.
I'm not quite sure how many peo- I, I'd be lying if I told you how many people have gotten, if I give you a number. I don't think most people are gonna get a second and subsequent because the reality is, is you'd have to look back to figure out if they got a parking ticket. And the real, and the cops don't have the ability to look back to see if that, we don't even have access to that program to see if they've been cited for it, so.
It makes sense to raise it then.
We wouldn't even know it. We always issue a first offense and, and it's a matter of volume.
Right.
So when, when you want us to sit down, you can hammer away on, on me.
Okay, thank you.
So then, in, in reality, the hundred dollar fine for second offenses meaningless.
Yep.
It's on the books. If the technology catches up where it can be used, it's ready to go.
So what do we need to get you for technology?
I don't know. It's a matter of technology. It's a matter of, the, the police officers don't have access to that that programming, that program system to know whether it is a first offense or a second. Our general physics, the sys- the, the R M S system that we use uh doesn't incorporate parking citations. It's a whole different program, which isn't in their squads, which like I said, it, you I don't know if we want an officer looking up every ticket, every, I mean, like I said, I'll, I'll give, I'll share the numbers. You want me to sit down?
I think it would, it would ultimately, it's more of a, the, it's more of a labor intensive.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. To get, get the second subsequent to find out those cars, we probably ultimately be slowing down writing the amount of citations we would over the course of, of the evening.
Kayla? President, so the, the, when we went through the updates, the reason it's on there again is because it's an option and it's something out there. But I also would not recommend that officers go through any actual laborious effort to look up a second. It would be very inefficient. The best thing you can do is come up with a system where it would be instantly available to them if it was a second or not. I don't know if that technology exists. But it is on the books and it's ready in case there is some sort of program or system out there like that.
Mr. President, if I may, um I would rather see our officers out there doing what they're paid to do and not be parking checkers. So that's one of the things, you know, that I look at as far as resource. Is what we try to explain um to those that are, are frustrated with the parking uh regulations or the, the lack of what they feel is enforcement. We get, we've got what, three P C Os, I believe now?
Yes, we're.
And that, that, that's parking control officers that are out there. But I'm not even sure the shifts that they run, to be honest with you. I mean, if you're doing a, a, a snowstorm, you're tasked with all these other things, all these emergencies that are going on. You can't be out there necessarily to be writing the tickets as much as would be needed.
You can fill in with any stats. So we, we do have an overnight parking control officer, and when a storm comes up like this, emphasis is put on officers uh to go out and write citations. Generally, one of the things that we're, I guess, uh that comes along with a storm is we do see a reduce, reduction in some of the other calls, so they do have the efforts, the time to, to do some of that. And I know one of the older people, Alderman Rote, was out doing a ride along during the storm and saw them doing that. Um and we do, we do also kinda try to see if we're gonna bring in other officers on overtime to do that. Um that's kind of a balancing act because our main goal is to make sure that we get the streets cleared for D P W to be able to go through. And we were at a point where um bringing in other officers would have created more tickets issued, but probably would not have made their plowing operations any more efficient because the tow companies simply couldn't um keep up with the, the amount of toes that were out there. And I know Captain Clemente had pulled the numbers for how many citations the parking control officers and the officers wrote during their last snowstorm. And I don't know if you wanted to throw that out there?
We, we wrote, uh for the snow emergency citations alone, we wrote a two-hundred-and-sixty snow emergency tickets during the course of those at three days or two days. Uh along with another twenty-one overnight parking violations and wrongsiders to a total of two-hundred-and-eighty free tickets during that short period of time. Uh we called for two-hundred-and-ninety-two toes and we verified that, we know that forty-one of those were towed. Um the reality is, is we sent such a volume to N and S towing. Uh literally, at one point, we sent them a four-page document that encompassed about seventy-five toes at one time. Uh there's no, there's no tow company that can keep up with the, with the volume uh to try to do with it. So regardless of how many tickets we write or the bite into them potentially, if nobody adheres to it upfront, we're just gonna be, we're just gonna be papering more people with a higher fine amount. Uh maybe that'll get them to move. I, I don't know. I don't know if that's the, the idea. Uh but we, I don't believe there's a capacity to tow any more cars any faster, especially when it's uh in the midst of the storm. Um the biggest thing that we try to do is work, uh I try to work closely with Tim Last and Mike Brofman, Dave, to try to figure out where they're gonna be, how, what, I mean, we can go ticket in one side of the, the city and they're working on another. So the goal is to try to figure out where they're going so we can be ahead of them to ticket and tow. But then again, once again, we get to the same problem. We can ticket them and call for the toes. We're just at the mercy of how quickly the toes can get through. Uh and that's typically what we try to do is on the main thoroughfares, uh we hit those as much as you can right away. And usually those are fairly clear, I think, for the most part. My twenty-seven years here, we've taken, typically been able to clear the, the main thoroughfares pretty quick because it's, everybody knows, there's no parking at all, so it's an easy one. Uh it's the, it's the side streets that become, become trickier uh because people don't move their cars or they, they forget about it or whatever it is their reasoning is. They just don't do anything with them. Uh and we're stuck trying to figure it out later. Your ordinance that you created works. From the standpoint that it allows us to go as the, as the, the days go on for like day two, once they're done with the, the um the initial cleanup on the main streets and they go through and they'll try, it gives us the opportunity to ticket and tow cars right off the start uh without having to do them as an abandoned vehicle, 'cause that's what we have to do after the snows, after the, the declaration is gone, uh has uh subsided, is we have to do things that a little more, it takes us a little longer to get some of the other things done. Um so there is a, there is a good part to having that thing. The, the second, the continuation of it being from midnight till three in the afternoon. It works. Uh I will say that I know you guys took a beating last year for it on social media, but the reality is, is it made sense. It allowed me to do my job better leading up to things because I could ticket and tow your car for a violation, whether there was snow on the ground or not. That was the beauty of, of, of the rule. So as we knew things were ramping up, I didn't need to wait to, for Dave to declare a snow emergency. If things were problematic for us, if there was another reason uh as far as with snow was coming or if it was icy, or we just had a buildup of cars even after the snow emergency, we could ticket and tow it. I would, I would set up my time saying, what's part of the city you're going to, to Dave's people? What city you get, what part are you gonna do? All right, I would call N and S. I would tell them, I need you to get a driver on extra. We're gonna be setting up, and I would send an officer, in this case, many times, a parking control officer might come in extra from midnight on, and they would just literally focus on trying to clear up the streets so they could clear up the days after. So I'll be honest, I was a little disappointed when it disappeared. And that makes it even more confusing now if you decide to bring something back. Uh it's gonna be another, another hurdle of back and forth and back and forth.
And Mr. President, if I may say, that's why I'm visiting this conversation that if we were to revert back to that, because I know it made sense. We studied it long enough and really, really took a deep dive about, before we jumped in and made that ordinance change. Um we need signage. So if that really was beneficial, beneficial and we work in tandem like that, then why won't we consider bringing that back and look into what the cost of the signage that's required? And put it back on the book because that was really the confusion. It's like, you come to visit the city, there's no sign there. What do you mean I got a ticket? Well, you visit a city, you should know their laws and ordinance. I, I agree. It, it really angered quite a few people. But I think over time, just like Dana and I had said, or Alderwoman Keen and I had said, give it a chance. Let's see how this works. Everybody just came out on fire about it, you know, so food for thought going forward if we did decide to, to try to tackle this collectively.
Do we only work with N and S?
Yes.
Why is that?
Just for our contract is through.
So my question is, I've had a couple ki- uh tow companies in the area reach out to me and say, how do we get to be a tow company for the city?
You'd have to bid the contract.
So we don't have anything to do with that, that goes to their purchasing.
Last time, I don't think anyone else, Rebecca, can speak to it. Did we only have one other tow company put in a bid or was it only just N and S?
It was only N and S.
Was the only one who bid, so guess who won?
There was another one though that, that did say they did bid on it and they did not get contacted.
I think a lot of the challenges are people don't have the capacity that we need.
Right.
But N and S doesn't have the capacity we need either.
Well, they have more than everyone else.
No one does. No one has a capacity. When you're, when you're asking, there is not a single tow company, singular tow company that I can think of that would have the capacity to take on two-hundred-and-ninety-two toes in a two-day period. that I can think of that would have the capacity to take on 292 toes in a two-day period. That's what we hit them with. It's just, nobody has the room, and, and that's, and I don't know, I, I know that we towed 41. The problem was is we would send them to less than, sometimes they'll get, they'll send it back to us, but we had difficulty getting things back to them. So there may be more toes that were actually completed, but that volume of toes, and I said, that's just, just can, it was continuous, and I don't know of any singular tow company that could provide that, and I think it would be difficult to try to go to multiple tow companies to, you know, who's got them? It would be figure, well, who did you call for that car? Where's this car? Where's that car? You'd have to figure out who, where they all went and trying to determine, 'cause when somebody wants to know, when they call us, 'cause they're gonna call us, "My car's gone", we'd have to know, well, which company picked it up? Who did we call for that? And it, it might be even a bigger nightmare for the city to try to figure out who and where everything is versus the one tow company.
What if we had, when the new DPW facility is made, what if we had a location to take vehicles to?
I don't think, I, I don't, I don't, I don't know if the city, so you, but then you take on the liability of all the things that go with holding on to people's vehicles and things of that nature.
You have to have someone man that tow station for 24 hours. You have to have the insurance that's going to cover it. You have to.
And even, even if you, even if we had a holding facility, even if we had a holding facility, you still need the tow trucks to go pick them up and you're, it's, 'cause right now, NNS typically is taking from their, from whatever location in the city, and they take them up to just off of Layton, around 108th and Layton up in that area. That's where they, that's one of their tow lots. I think they might have another one, but even if, they have, only have so many trucks, so even if they have 10 trucks available, it takes, each tow takes 15, 20 minutes for them, you know, to get it, maybe drive it up there, get back. It's a matter of just, it's a matter of volume. I mean, it may be a solution. I, I just, the getting the people to follow the rules up front.
That'd be great.
Is so much, is so much simpler, and it wouldn't, that doesn't cost the city any money to get somebody to follow the rules up front, right?
And Mr. President, if I may say, there was no real way of describing, people can't, had a difficult time just adapting to what over, you know, odd and even parking is. I mean, that's a disaster, so when we put that ordinance together, it was those that didn't do overnight parking that really couldn't, you know, understand the concept. But yeah, we don't, we, we can't do a tow operation, but there are, and I just have to speak to this with NNS. NNS has 10 other contracts with other municipalities, so when we speak to trying to, you know, find, you know, where these vehicles are, if they can service 10 other municipalities, then maybe we need to look into how can we make it efficient, where we can find multiple tow companies to, to combat the issue and just find a, a way we can do that if we, we get the bids and we do an RFP on it.
I think the major issue is, how do we get people to get, get their cars off the streets?
Yep.
It's education. Obviously, we can't do it through fines. It would be nice if we could put out a $200 fine, and once a person got a fine like that, you know, they'd wake up and they would pay attention, but we can't do that, because state law prohibits us from that. So we have to do it through education. It's the only tool that we have. Maybe signage is the way to go.
I think it would've been very helpful, but we, we couldn't at that time really take that chance without piloting it to, to, you know, spend that amount of money. And I don't know if we would've had this, you know, Dana and I would've had that support from the council at the time, but I think this is a growing problem, and we need to address it.
And I think if you're looking, if you're looking at doing signs, there's a lot of areas in the city where you don't need to put the signs in, because if they, people don't park on the streets. My neighborhood, Kevin's neighborhood, there's whole neighborhoods in the city where you don't have that issue. It's certain areas of town, the east end primarily, where, you know, if you put signage there, where it's, it would be less expensive than trying to do the whole city.
However, if I may, Mr. President, Kale, Attorney Decker, we went over the cost of that, and if you could tell us what the, the actual law on that is, Kale, if you remember, I think you said we had to put it on all the city streets.
Sure. So the, the city had a couple of options. Last, last time through, we used the snow emergency laws to enact it citywide where you don't have to put up any signs. That was the fastest way of doing it without incurring the cost of signage. The semantics of calling it a snow emergency, there's no snow on the ground, bothered some people. The other option is to simply put up signs, which you could do, the violation of the sign. You don't need to change the emergency regulations, but you would need a sign that's visible from the parking space or it's enforceable, to be several signs per block facing both ways, so it would be a lot of signs.
Right, and I think if, to refresh everyone's memory, it was to the tune of a little over $400,000. So on the front end, does it make sense to invest something like that to combat the issue in the future? You know, that's why we, we thought to pilot it, but we weren't really given the opportunity to pilot it very, for very long.
I just enforce what you guys tell me. You create it, we'll try to enforce it.
Just a quick question. Dave, do you, you schedule a certain time for crews to return to remove or clear the snow from the intersections? The snow on Walmer Road and National was so high, you couldn't see the cars coming from a different direction, crossing the intersection. It was very dangerous. Do you schedule a time for the crews to come back and take some of the snow away?
Yeah, so we, I believe what you're inquiring is the medians. When individuals go and they wanna make a turn in the medians, front-end loaders in this case, they clear the medians and then they pile the snow, and then we do come back and it gets, it's on our checklist, not a priority, priority, but once we do the cul-de-sacs, the safety islands, we remove that snow from the dead ends and the cul-de-sacs, then that is on the list as well. So yes, but it's.
I have to say thank you to you and your staff. Basically, I only had one call, one call this last snowstorm, and it was a big snowstorm. So really, I think.
We got a good staff.
Yes.
We really do, and nobody in that operation called in sick. Nobody, everybody was there and it was multiple shifts. We asked people to do multiple shifts and come back in 12 hours later, and we didn't, we got good participation. So kudos to them. That was not me. You know, that was them.
No, I know. We have a wonderful staff.
It's getting to be seven o'clock, so.
Move, we get your.
Second.
Favor.
Aye.
Holds.
Again, Dave.